Good evening, everyone. It is September 27th, Tuesday. It is now 6:30. We'll call the work session to order. We will go through the meeting agenda for the work session discussing the regular meeting. We will have the September 13th, 2022 meeting minutes on the agenda, as well as the second meeting and a vote on the tax military. We also have time for discussion of the summary of accomplishments and findings of the Finance Committee. The Finance Committee, Councilwoman Tran, I'm not sure if you have anything to present. This evening, we discuss.
Looking at the work session. Do you want to go through the entire agenda first, or you want to go over them one by one?
I just ask if you have anything to add to this discussion.
Yes, thank you. Okay. Are you going to start the discussion now? Okay. So there wasn't any meeting for the Finance Committee, as well as no directions from the council, whether what they want the committee to do. So there wasn't any action really being done by the committee. And at this moment, the committee is no longer exist. So I really, I am really not quite sure what is my standing here. I don't have the position to present something that no longer exists. All what I can say is that whatever the action had been done is done under the council authority. It's not really, there wasn't any direction from the council to go find something, for the committee, Finance Committee, to go find something. So that never, there wasn't any direction, therefore, there nothing really been done. And on the cost of sanitation, I do believe the city have all the protocols.
Any other discussion by council?
Yes. I asked for a report on finances because of documentation that was requested by Councilwoman Tran. So requesting that documentation, we'd like to know what were you looking for? What did you find? Or why were you looking at all the documentation that you requested?
Well, everybody looking differently, and every of us have a way to look at it differently. So all the documents that I asked were check register, journal entries, purchase report. So that's all that report for helping me to perform my purchase governance concept. All, and I also require every report that I ask, for some reason, these being shared among the council for the past two and a half years. There are not many reports that have been asked by the council being shared with me. And I'm not quite certain if that because none of the council ever request any report, or would I be, would I have been treated differently? But I didn't have any problem with sharing the information among other council members because that helped to perform purchase governance, which is each council member's responsibility. So the information is given to you, whether you use it or not, it's up to you. And I use them to help me to perform my purchase governance concept.
You stated that the, and we all know that the Finance Committee has come to an end. So in order to close it out properly, I think we need a report. That is the reason for asking, because you have so many documents that you were looking at. Whatever you're finding, you guys put it in a report and submit it to the council. We don't need next to next.
Only if I find something. And if you want to do so, then we need to reestablish the committee again. I'm not at the position of anything related to the committee to perform the concept that committee had. So that would be unauthorized. When I said the report that I have been asking were check registers, journal entry, journal letter, all that for, all of that information for supporting the only progress, which is purchase governance. And again, all the information being shared among the council, very much the council all have that. So it will be up to each individual of you how you would like to use it. When it comes to me, I read that.
I would just like to say for the record still, I think the council need a report of your findings. And I'll leave it at that.
Councilman Vaughn, any discussion from you?
I have no discussion, but would you please, Renee and Ben, would you please turn on your microphones? Because Gaudy, Salma, Fine, and you too, I can barely hear you guys.
Oh, it's in the talking booth.
We'll try to talk now, okay. So moving on, we also have a work session agenda, a public hearing for the tax military. I will look to City Manager.
Sir. Thank you for the opportunity, and thank you Mayor, Council, and citizens. This is a continuation of our previous discussion from the last meeting into second reading. Essentially, the city of Morrow has the Le- the Leving Authority and this military rates for the property of the city, and we have to follow the Georgia state laws on that. We've published an ad with a five-year history of leverage, of levies, rather. We've, we have our public hearing today, if there's any questions from the public on that. We have a notice that's been posted. And what the suggestion is on the floor is that we reduce the military rate by .582 mils to 8.499 mils in order to match our rollbacks in the local option sales tax.
Sounds good. So we'll do the public hearing, the discussion for against during the meeting?
Yes. Well, we can do it back to back and forth.
We can do it, definitely. Okay, so at this time, we will open the public hearing for the tax military rate. If there are any citizens that would like to have the opportunity to speak, certainly do so at this time, those for the rollback. Those opposed to the rollback? Last call, any, any citizens willing to speak on the military rate rollback? All right, hearing, none. At this time, we will close the public hearing. So during the regular meeting, we will add an opportunity for Chief Parkler to give us a few updates with regards to PD activities. But at this time, we've gone through the work, gone through the agenda for the regular meeting. Are there any comments? I would like to say welcome to Walking in Authority. We are so glad that you all are here today. We're always glad that you all, when you all come to our meetings. And Ms. Sparkle Adams, did you want to take an opportunity to speak now? Or did you want to wait till the regular meeting?
No, right now. Perfect, perfect, perfect. I appreciate that. You know, it's, let me get to the microphone. It's always a pleasure to come here. It's always a pleasure for me to show off my teams. It's always a pleasure for me to come and, and hear you guys take care of business. I mean, it, as a former council member, I know how it is sitting up there. So with that being said, but I also wanted to let you all know that we are a part of GMA as well as NLC. And we attend all of the activities as a youth council. So we do represent Morrow. And so with that being said, I want to know if we can have some type of collaboration, whether we are your official youth council for GMA and for NLC. If you all would have us, we love working with you all. We love working with the city of Morrow. And so I, I, you all think about it, okay? Think about it. And, and we would love to, because most of them attend Morrow High School. They live in the city of Morrow. Some of them did, some of them don't. But with that being said, we want to be your official youth council. But we have done several events with you all, and it's been a fantastic collaboration. However, I must address the elephant in the room. The last event that we did, the Moon Festival, I was under the impression that it was a city event. Then I found out it was not a city event. I felt like I was deceived, but I was gonna have the teens show up anyway, because we will not let you all down. And showing up, Councilwoman Tran, I had already talked to you about this, but I do feel the need to say it here publicly, that your conduct at that event was reprehensible. It was unbecoming of a councilwoman. It was unbecoming of an adult. The tone with which you addressed the people that were trying to help you, it was embarrassing to me, and I know I have a tone that I have to watch myself. But listening to you talk to a full-grown man the way you did, it hurt my heart as a woman. The way you accused my teens of taking your little yellow vouchers, it was offensive. I take responsibility for them, and I don't accuse them of stealing. Mine's, I'm not gonna say they don't do things, I would never say that. But the way you approached me, and you told me that you think they took your vouchers, hurt my feelings. The way you were hollering at them, and I'm standing there, and I told you then, I said, "What you will not do is talk to my teens in your kind of way. I am here, and what you won't do is offend them." Because they are here, they were here to help. They don't deserve to be talked to the way you did. You did apologize afterwards, but the damage that you did, no ma'am. It will not happen again. The way, when we came, you had a diagram of where we were supposed to be. Even if they changed the diagram, you took us and put us all the way in the back in a darkened area to put some other people up in the front. That is not the way we do it. I will not put them in a dark area.
So Ms. Sparkle.
I'm sorry.
If, if I might, I appreciate your comments, and I want to make sure that we end, end on a positive note that's gonna serve the students best, and it's going to highlight their capabilities and abilities. So we'll certainly, it, it has been discussed with the city manager to bring the students in and have a conversation about collaboration moving forward. Because I certainly would not want to leave a poor impression. We're, we're here to serve, and we're here to make sure that these young people have the opportunity to see government in action and hopefully, prayerfully, participate. Because these folks, we're not gonna sit up here forever. And we certainly need young leadership to embrace the heart and the responsibility and the work that it goes along to represent their community. So I certainly appreciate, appreciate you coming today. I appreciate all of the participation that you all take, take part in with city events. The Juneteenth Festival was pretty awesome. You guys did presentations, yeah, I see the thumbs up. You guys did presentations, you were able to give the information on the drop of a dime, and it was, it was, it was great. So we do appreciate Ms. Sparkle Adams, we do appreciate Walking in Authority. And again, I just wanted to make sure that the students know that we are here to collaborate with them in a positive way, to make a positive impression, so that you all can step into our shoes and be leaders. We certainly need you all to be leadership, community-minded.
Absolutely, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. I would like to say also that they were looking good Saturday night in their dress up.
Yes. At the, in the National Ball, yes, thank you.
Yes, they were awesome.
So I'm going to respond to a few comments. And thank you, Ms. Ann Sparkle, for sharing the information. So the event was about, when I was out there talking with, not only you, but other sponsor or participant in the event, there wasn't any indication that this is an event. I always say, "I am having an event." And I apologize for the miscommunication, that you thought somehow thought this an event. It wasn't, I wish it were an event. I just proposed to council to have that event as, at once, in a very short period of time, I have 16 people came to me and asked for that. So I saw the need, the request that validated. So I proposed to council, and the council, at the time, did not have a positive response for that. And then the community still asking to have the event. And I, when I and my council partner started to build the event and have the event, but there wasn't any indication of, to anyone, this was a city event. And the event itself, on the day, it was supposed to start 7:00 PM. So 5:00 PM, we already had with a good, I would say, 350 to 400 people in the park. The game wasn't set up, the volunteer was supposed to meet me at 5:30. The music already on going. So for me to try to get with, everyone tried to get everything set up, I had to talk a little bit louder than my normal voice to communicate with everyone, to be quickly, to get everything settled for the event. And if it went across the wrong way, my apologize, it wasn't an intention. And for Walking in Authority, I would have to say this. No word can express, distract my impressing about you guys. You were acceptable. And I'm going to share the small story, a little story around the event. One of the games was the walking around the circle game. I was bouncing around trying to get control for the game to all the volunteer group. And they, when I would apply, locate the ticket, the transit ticket for them to pull in the game, and I was still running to try to figure out where they are, because that really meant him the game. Meanwhile, the two other games still going, and I have to get it settled. The vendor came in, and they just came in, they set their table at the place that they were. I sent everyone the chart of where they would be, where the table would be before the event. Unfortunately, it didn't turn out that way. On that day, I was at the park since 9:30. I just went home at 4:00 to take, to wash, and then to get back within half an hour. And everything stood towards, the vendors came in, and the table were misplaced. And the, 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 the Walking in Authority table would happen to be at the time response spot. If it was a different spot, then I would not ask for relocating. And at that moment, the only, the quickest solution was that move into the next spot. It's not my intention to set anyone in the dark. That would not be my wish to anyone. But anyway, the odd thing, when I came back to the walking game, before, if I was shopping, would impress me, good impressing that, you guys were out the, the phone, and get the fortune wheel going instead of using the tickets. That's intelligent and sharp, and that's all the problem solver skill. And that was a good impressment to me, and I do appreciate you guys so much. And I don't know what word can I use to express that appreciation. And since you guys are here tonight, I also prepare appreciation certificates to present to you guys.
Awesome, so that's a great way to end it on a positive note. So Chief Parkler, would you like to go ahead and make the presentation? We can do the presentation officially in the regular meeting.
Ms. Sparkle?
This is a work session, right? This is a work session, we just gotta have.
Ms. Sparkle, if the kids need to go home early, would it be okay to do that?
We generally leave and go and get something to eat, because they're coming from school, they have homework, they, you know, we don't want to keep them out really late, so.
Certainly, we can pivot.
Okay.
Let's adjust.
Okay.
So at this point in time, you have a presentation, and we'll have Chief Parkler after the presentation.
So to Ms. Sparkle Adams and all members of Walking in Authority Team Council, I'm here to present the certificate of appreciation for your support and volunteer in assisting the Fall Community Moon Festival in Morrow. And just, just volunteer and your support is, well, is greatly appreciated. So I want to present it to you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, can, can they come up?
Could I?
Certainly. Okay, come on, you're, we're gonna take a group picture. Andy? Come on, come on down here. No, you're in the picture. Right, the guys.
We're gonna start by height.
All the guys gonna stand, go ahead on the other side. Ms. Danielle, you're on one end. Okay, are we looking at you, Ms. Vickers?
We're good.
Okay. Maybe get my iPhone.
Have they used Android?
No. Okay, y'all, hold on, hold on, hold on. Maybe get, maybe. Thank you. Okay. Everybody good?
Yes, you are. Smile.
Thank you so much.
And again, for the good of all, Ms. Sparkle, we will follow up, so that we can sit down and see how we can collaborate and get, get some agreements together so that the students that have your participation, yes. All right. City Manager, Mr. Vickers, we'll, we'll be able to set, set an appointment, so that we'll talk, and we'll make sure that we get this done for the students.
Okay, so October the 14th through the 16th, we'll travel to Dublin and represent Morrow.
As you always do.
All right, right now, we're gonna go eat.
One last word before you leave, and when we were talking about the volunteer, you said, you, you told me you would be proud of us. And I'm telling all of you guys, I'm proud of you guys. You did a good job, excellent, thank you.
He wants a kiss.
Actually, it's been a very busy two weeks, just in the last three days, including today. Today, we had a drug bust just prior to coming here, bags, two wanted people. Two wanted people, crack cocaine, powdered cocaine, ecstasy, marijuana, and both people were wanted driving the car. Our newest hire, Officer Burrell, the female that I introduced on the last one, is the one that orchestrated this. And yesterday, she was instrumental in finding a stolen vehicle with a wanted person in it. So she's really on fire. She's, she's the hot hand right now, as a matter of fact. She's still FDOing, which is a, when you ride around with a field training officer, we have a period of two weeks that they ride before they're actually certified, even though she was a previous officer. They need to become familiar with our, our policies and our talent, so that they know how to get around and everything. She's in the middle of her FTO program with Officer Patrol. And she's absolutely killing it. In addition to that, one of our other officers got a stolen vehicle yesterday with a wanted perp inside of it, a perp trailer. And our stats are way up, even short Um even short-staffed as we are, we're our our stats are up twenty-eight percent for the last week compared to uh last year. And overall, since uh the new administration has taken over, we're up thirty-seven percent in arrests. Um uh business checks are up a hundred percent. We're actually documenting them, so um we've had a lot of people reach out to us, both on social media. And if you guys aren't on our Facebook page, you'd be on our Facebook page. It's quite a bit, quite a quite a sight to see. It's a little different than it was before. I think you'd be interested in looking at it. But uh business checks, the business owners are really excited about. We've had a lot of people come and we just did a test. Uh you know, we've got a small five hundred uh of those notifications that I told you guys we were gonna do and everything. It's such a success, we just ordered five thousand. So uh so we're gonna continue doing that. And these people were doing business checks before. There was just no remnant of their business check for you to see when you came in as a business owner. Now, you're actually walking in saying, oh, this is the officer that was there and this is what time they were there. So uh it's nothing that they weren't doing before. You just have proof now.
Excellent.
So I'm really excited with the way things are going. And and you know, both the old and the new are getting along very, very well. Yes, ma'am.
I may have missed this, and if I did, I apologize. But there was a large police presence on Jopar Road in front of Walker House last week.
It was your uh the task force? Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot about that. Thank you. We wrote a hundred and three citations. Um we had a operation with Clayton County Eats and um the Henry County Police Department came down and assisted us. We're doing one of those every two weeks. We wrote a hundred and three citations, six arrests. Um hang on, I've got it right here.
Ms. Janelle, are you talking about Sunday night up there at the Wells Fargo?
Yes.
Okay. Well, this is a good sidebar, but you know, we'll get to that in a second.
I'm sorry, I did get sidetracked. Uh but hang on, I'm gonna pull that up.
It was a fugitive task force. They had located uh they had a suspect on a one person. It was Clayton County, I think, the US Marshal's on the ball.
Correct. Suspect out of um I told you where it was. Lake City for murder. Uh they actually got one of them and they were looking for the other one at the time. Um I don't know if they got them, but that's that was that presence.
And the guys that found an open door to the bank, so they were waiting on men. So it was all just happened to be at the same time.
But anyway, we had a hundred and three citations, seventy-seven citations by Marl PD, eight warnings, six arrests, eight impounds of vehicles. The average speed was twenty-four twenty-four miles an hour over the speed limit on seventy-five and nineteen point five six miles per hour over the speed limit in the city, which is way too fast for all of those. The highest speed was ninety-nine miles an hour and uh the highest speed in the city was sixty-seven and thirty, so. And we're gonna do that every two weeks. It's already been posted that we're doing it. And uh we're collaborating with the EAT unit from Clayton County and and we're turning around and giving them the same consideration. They're helping us, we're helping them. We're gonna start working with these agencies that are around us, using their assistance and providing assistance at the same time. So that way, we actually have a larger presence. And then none of the services that you would get normally are gonna be diminished because we're working traffic. So and we only had to pay two people overtime to do this. So I mean, there's budgetary concerns, so.
It makes me happy. Could you I have a question out here in the audience about the intersection, our famous intersection over here on Lake Harbor and Highway Fifty-four.
I have a Lieutenant Thrasher, who I fondly call our Swiss Army knife because he does a little bit of everything. And he is working that every morning from seven till nine and every evening from four till six.
If I may interject very quickly, Chief, um I don't know if there's an issue at the south of the um mall entrance, but I just got a text about traffic. If if we can have somebody, I know this is a property, maybe send somebody. Yeah, currently.
Okay.
I think there's a traffic issue. I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I just got a text.
Is the train still up there?
Can you give it? We got somebody on our radar.
I appreciate that. Our intersections.
Oh, the Lake Harbor and uh he's averaging ten citations a day between morning and evening. Uh it's it's constant, it's constant. Every time I go through that intersection, somebody does it because of course I don't have police bars and everything on top, you know, like visible lights on my police cars, so they just cut me off too. And it's just uh we're gonna keep doing it until they stop doing it.
Do you go yell when they cut you off?
I do. And it's a surprise. But uh it's a it's everybody's working together. I mean, it's I I'm so happy with the way that all the officers are helping each other out, staying over there. They're uh excited. And uh I've seen the excitement pick up uh since I've been there because everybody wants a place. They just want to have a correction which way they want to. That's why they're all police officers. And now we collectively all have a correction. So that's uh that's working well for all of us, for all of us.
Well, we appreciate the update.
Yes, ma'am.
What was the officer's name again? What was her name? What was her name?
Her name, her name is uh Burrell, B U R R E L L. And not even off FTO, but she's been responsible for three felony arrests in the last three days.
And a whole lot of drugs.
It's a pretty good benchmark. Again, thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thanks.
So that concludes the work session items that we were going to discuss. Um we'll go ahead and wrap up the work session and we will hold for our regular meeting.
May I, if I might, I have since we have twenty minutes left and I have something to present. It's going to take my best and finest, if I might.
Go for it.
Could I have this uh file where the monitor, please? So on the screen, I'm sharing few pictures of the Moon Festival, the event that we have on October sixteenth. This event attracted thousands of peoples coming in that night. And there was a lot of people came from outside the city. Not on, it wasn't only um the people who live in uh city uh Marlboro. So um so I just want to share with the council um how did the event go? And because it's uh attract so many tourists and participants in the communities. And I am proposing to have um if the city would consider to take this as an annual event because we have the fund for hotel, hotel tax to global tourists. And this event fit perfectly for that purpose.
Thank you for the presentation. Um we'll go ahead and adjourn the work session and we will start the regular meeting at seven thirty. Thank you.